...meeting of the 2025 Pittsburgh City Council, Monday, January 6, 2025. I now call the meeting to order. I wish everybody a happy, healthy, and safe New Year. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anybody else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Seeing none, if Counselor Van Hazinger, if you could please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, if you could please take your ball.
Counselor Van Hazinger?
Here.
Counselor Walsh?
Here.
President Zarela?
Here.
Counselor Boishman? Counselor Kuchar? Counselor Cregan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Nine members present.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Great job. Public forum, the public has been advised to contact the Clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes and following have been brought to our attention. We have none. And I'm going to read the warrant that was posted for the call of this meeting on December 20th, 2024. Dear Counselors, the organizational meeting of the 2025 City Council will be held on Monday, January 6, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street, Fitchburg, Mass. The meeting will be open to the public. Persons who wish to participate remotely in the public forum proportion of the meeting may request a remote audience meeting link by contacting the city clerk at thecityclerk@fitchburgma.gov. The meeting has been called for following purposes. First, election of the Council President for the year 2025. Next, election of City Council Vice President for year 2025. And then we have two orders. 1-25, adopting rules of the City Council for year 2025. And 2-25, setting dates of the regular meeting of the City Council for the year 2025. And that was posted by myself, Joanna Balata, City Clerk. So we'll now go right into the meeting. And the first step is to open up to the floor nominations for the Office of Counsel President.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Zarela.
Counsel President Zarela.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for President of Council? Okay, I will take a motion to close that.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So we're going to do a roll call vote to close nominations. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarela?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And we're now going to take a roll call vote for President Zarela as the 2025 President Council.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarela?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Pass as unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And we'll switch seats.
It's my honor to serve another year. I will now open the floor for nominations to the Office of Vice President.
Nominate Counselor Van Hazinga.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Gina Tally.
No second is required on nominations, so we have two candidates. Do we have any further nominations? All right. Do I have a motion to close? I have a motion and second to close nominations. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Van Hazinga. Oh, this is to close. Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarela?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, close nominations is 9-0.
All right. As we have only two minutes, we will not be conducting a ballot procedure. We'll simply take a roll call vote. And each Counselor, please state the name of the Counselor you wish to serve as Vice President.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Van Hazinga.
Counselor Walsh?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
President Zarela?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Counselor Cregan?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Counselor Cruz?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Counselor Gina, Gina Tally?
Gina Tally.
Counselor Fleming?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Counselor Green?
Gina Tally.
Counselor Schultz?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Seven, I apologize, to two. Counselor Van Hazinga?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support and your faith in me. Let's see. Next, we have the rules of the City Council. We have three proposals for rule changes this year. All three are cosponsored by myself, Counselor Schultz, and Vice President Van Hazinga. I will yield to either of the other two who would like to introduce the proposal. Otherwise, I will.
I can talk for a few minutes. Thank you, Counsel President Zarela. I just think these changes are aimed at fairness in speaking before the Council. And I think 10 consecutive minutes is plenty of time to get your point across. And also, on the other part of it, with the Vice President assisting the Council President with the meeting, I think it's very difficult to keep track of everything while you're presiding over the meeting. And I think any help you can get from Vice President would be warranted. So I'm hoping that these two changes will pass. Of course, we're always open to amendments. If you see that there's something that could be added or subtracted, we're amenable to that as well. Thank you for the time. I yield the floor.
Thank you. I'm going to read off Proposal Number One and then take any questions or comments. This would be to add Rule 1.4A. The Vice President shall assist the President in maintaining order and may, for that purpose, speak out of turn to warn or advise a speaker of a potential violation of rules pertaining to time, germaneness, or decorum. If the member disagrees, this shall be deemed a point of order raised by the Vice President and shall be ruled upon by the President, provided, however, that in speaking under this rule, the Vice President shall not offer any opinion on a subject under debate, and provided further, that the President shall remain sole judge of all points of order. Questions or comments? Counsel Fleming?
Another rule to further silence everybody. That's what it sounds like to me. That's it. That's my comment.
Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's worth noting that, you know, we really, all of us, have the right, under Roberts' of Order, to raise points of order at any time and to, you know, to sort of check one another. So I'm not sure that this rule is totally necessary. And also, the President is not the sole judge of points of order. If a member disagrees, we could take a vote to determine a ruling. So it's worth noting. So I think we do need to amend this if we're going to file it, if we're going to propose this petition. It does need to be amended because the President is not the sole determiner of points of order. And what I, my trepidation of also this proposal is that it would discourage others from exercising their right to make points of order. We all have that right. So I'm not totally sure if this is a necessary rule, but I'm willing to hear arguments in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the floor.
So, go ahead. Counselor Gina Tally.
I agree with Counselor Cruz that it's unnecessary. I, you know, take this for what it's worth. There has been a concerted effort for the last six or seven years. And I know some are going to say that this is not what the intent is, but, I mean, it, there are implications, there are motivations, or else these wouldn't come before us. There has been a lot of heated rhetoric over the last several years. And prior to the first 10 years on the Council, none of this was ever an issue. And all of a sudden, the last five, six years, it's always been an issue. I feel like every year, we have rule changes or proposals to backdoor limit speech without saying that outright. Okay? I would love to look at all of the meeting videos and see how many of us have actually spoke for 10 or more minutes in one sitting.
So Counselor, we're not actually debating the 10-minute rule yet.
I'm sorry. That's the next one. So the unnecessary part of it is, everybody can issue a point of order. I know that from personal experience, since I think I hold the trophy right now for people giving me a point of order. And, you know, like Counselor Fleming said, it just looks like, everyone's going to say it's not the intent, but it is the appearance of there is a motivation for these kinds of changes. Because someone said something six months ago they didn't like, and, oh, if we had this rule in place, we could have stopped him from saying that. And I take these changes personally because I, and I know Counselor Boishman agrees, he's not here, we're the usual targets. Because we speak with passion, we don't agree with the majority most of the time, and I'm no fan of the corner office. So 12 years on the Council, none of this was ever an issue. Now, all of a sudden, more rule changes to limit the amount of time, to have more speech police. That's what this is, more speech police. So I'm not voting for it for no other reason. It's unnecessary. Counselor Cruz said it. Everyone can issue a point of order. So, and the President can rule. And the President is highly capable of managing the meeting. I have not seen one meeting where he has not, where he's lost control. So that's a compliment to him. I've seen Presidents lose control. He has not lost control. There's no reason for this.
I appreciate that, Counselor. I think the intent here is to have something prior to the level of a point of order, sort of like the same thing as when I give a Counselor a meaningful look and say, Counselor, tone it back a little, you know, as opposed to having a formal point of order on the record. It doesn't change the rules for what you can and can't say at all. That said, you know, this rule was suggested to me, and I thought it could be helpful. I am not wedded to it. If it's the will of the Council that it not be adopted, it certainly is no skin off my But I don't think that the intent is that this would limit any more speech than we already have limitations on. It would simply be for those rare meetings where there is enough heated debate that it's difficult for me to keep track of what everyone is saying and doing at a given point in time. You know, if I'm, say, keeping time at the same time as trying to listen, or taking notes, or trying to take hands at the same time as I'm trying to listen to what's being said. But again, it would be helpful. I agree it's not necessary. I feel that, you know, we have an excellent group here. I've never felt, you know, I greatly appreciate the perception that I've never lost control of the meetings. I've also never felt that I was in danger of losing control of the meetings because you're all a great group to work with. This is more a sort of preemptive backstop than anything, but I'll leave it to the Council. Counselor Schultz?
I was just going to say, I do disagree with Counselor Gina Tally. The intent is not to target anyone. It's just to make, this particular rule is just to help, be helpful to the Council President in running the meeting, keep it very orderly, and that was the only intent. And in fact, I didn't draft these rules. Counselor Zarela was the one that drafted these rules, by the way.
I... The floor. Yes. And to be clear, I wasn't being duplicitous or anything either. I had the rules suggested to me by Counselors Schultz and Van Hazinga, and I drafted up the language. So if anyone has any objection to the language, that's on me. If anyone has objection to the substance, I'm backing it. But I don't have any personal stake in whether it passes or not. I'll be fine either way. Counselor Cregan?
I appreciate the sentiment of this. It's basically a collegiality effort to strengthen the tie between the Chair and the, I'm sorry, between the President and Vice President, but I don't think we need it. And I think that the President and Vice President can have the kind of relationship where it's, you know, if someone needs to take a point of order, they can do that. And Counselor Cruz said exactly what I was thinking, that it, we don't, we all have that ability. None of us are sleeping here, so I don't think we need it.
It sounds like there is not a majority, much less a two-thirds majority, so... Oh, Counselor Cruz, go ahead.
I'm, after hearing the arguments, I'm still not in favor, but let's, I'm going to make a motion in the affirmative, because that's what we do, make a motion to approve Order Number 1-25.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Zarela?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
No.
Counselor Cruz?
No.
Counselor Gina Tally?
No.
Counselor Fleming?
No.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
So that is six noes, three yes. The nos have it.
All right. Thank you very much. Number two, I'm pretty sure I know which way this one's going to go as well, but that's okay. Add Rule 3.2A. No member shall hold the floor for longer than 10 consecutive minutes while other members are waiting to speak. If no member is waiting to speak and the speaker has exceeded 10 minutes, then upon becoming aware that another member wishes to speak, the President shall indicate that the speaker's time will conclude in 30 seconds. The intent here is simply that if someone is speaking at length and there's no one waiting, they can go right ahead. It's simply to ensure that if someone is waiting their turn to speak, then they will not be waiting for longer than 10 minutes while someone else is speaking. Counselor Fleming?
I oppose this rule change as well. We're only allowed to talk twice during a meeting. So we've already limited that in rules of the past. And now to, to limit the amount of time someone can speak because there's somebody else waiting? You know, we're paid by the citizens here to speak on these items. Limiting what we can say and only giving us two chances to speak is really, again, silencing us.
Fair enough. I'll note that, in my recollection, there have probably only been one or two times a year that someone has exceeded 10 minutes in a given speaking opportunity, but... Oh, I see Counselor Boishman has joined us remotely. Welcome, Counselor. Just to refresh, since you were absent, we do have the same President and Vice President this year, and we have already disposed of Rule Proposal Number One in the negative. Counselor Gina Tally?
I look at this again as unnecessary, because I ask myself, how often does this happen? And as the President correctly pointed out, and he may be conservative, liberal with his estimate, twice maybe? And I'm also not clear, I mean, this could also pertain to, there have been many instances where some of us have spent more than 10 minutes, but there are questions, like especially during a budget meeting, you know? There could be a Counselor with four or five questions to a department head. Between the question period and the answer period, it could take 20 to 30 minutes, just for one Counselor who has the floor. Does this pertain to that as well?
It was not intended to.
No, not intended for that.
It's not intended to, but would that be the 10 minutes?
If it were adopted, we could certainly amend to clarify that that is not the intent. It would pertain to deliberative speech, not to questions.
If the Council were in the majority, or two-thirds, to vote for this, I would expect that amendment to be put in to make that clear, that it could take Counselors 20 to 30 minutes in very limited cases where they're asking multiple questions of a presentee or a department head. And typically, the department head's the one who's taking up the bulk of the time. So, but if it's just deliberative, like I said, I can count on one hand how many times I've done this over 10 minutes, because frankly, when I go long, President Zarela is always there to tell me, you've made your point, you've repeated yourself, move on. And it's never, it's always, I mean, I get frustrated sometimes, but there's always, there's already that check. So I don't know why this has to be codified. When these rule changes are put forward, I ask, are there circumstances that motivate these changes being proposed? Like, do we have this happen every meeting? Do we have this happen amongst five or six of us in a meeting? The answer is no and no. So I just, the word I'm using again is, I don't see the necessity of this. It's not been a problem. And even in a case where there's been a 10-minute overlay, okay, we're all still breathing, we all still go home at night, it isn't that big of a deal. You know, there's no rule written here that we must be out of here within two hours. Okay? Some people say to me all the time, I would like to hear someone speak longer. Maybe these people don't, but it's just, it's not necessary. You know, why 10 minutes? Make it, make it seven. Make it five. It's arbitrary to me. 10 minutes is a long time if you time it. So I don't know where, you know, make it five minutes. I just don't see the necessity in it. It just, it's not necessary.
Counselor Schultz?
I think that Counsel President Zarela is being kind and saying it's only happened one or two times. I think it's happened many times over the last number of years where people have exceeded 10 minutes. I mean, I just don't, I mean, we can say that that doesn't exist, but I don't think that's really reality. Because I've been to, I've been to these meetings, I've been in attendance, I, it's, we've exceeded 10 minutes many times. So, but I'm open to five minutes, seven minutes, whatever I think is reasonable. Because I think it's, it's just an issue of fairness when somebody wants to speak, that they have an opportunity to speak, you know, and they don't have to wait more than a certain number of minutes. I mean, a reasonable number of minutes. So I yield the floor.
Vice President?
Yes. This is something that's been proposed by Counsel Schultz in the past. In the past, I haven't supported it, but I think that this is something that does happen with more frequency than has been presented. That does happen semi-regularly. And it's, as Counsel Schultz said, it's just a matter of fairness. It's ensuring that everyone has a chance to speak. And often on contentious issues or things that there are a lot of people want to speak on, there can be a long wait, and it can be very difficult to, to make a point or to ask questions that are germane to the situation when you have to wait an hour or more before it's your turn to speak. So I think this only applies when there are people waiting. It does not include a back-and-forth questioning, it's just when someone is, you know, continuously talking. I think 10 minutes is a reasonable amount of time to make your point. And I think it's just something that ensures that everyone gets a chance to speak, gets their point heard, and gets to ask any questions they have in a reasonable amount of time. Thank you.
Counselor Cruz hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. President. I tend to agree with all my colleagues who have spoken so far. I think that there's an element to this that sort of infringes on our free speech as elected officials. But I agree that this, sort of the exceeding of 10, 15, 20 minutes or more happens on a regular basis. And I think this rule is a common courtesy, but it does, as the gentleman from Aldean Rowne said, it does need some tweaking. It shouldn't, it shouldn't matter when we are asking questions, that time should be infinite if we have things to ask. And I think a way to amend this in a favorable way is to say it is, it is the second time under deliberation. The first time, you may make your points, and the second time, you have a limit. Because during that second, especially during that second time, you need to address the things that have been brought up. And sometimes this takes a while, because you want to pay respect to your colleagues, you want to, you want to answer their questions, you want to agree or disagree, and you want to make comments on what they have said. So I think this should only apply to the second, the second time we are speaking, if we're going to pass it. And also, I think that it would be appropriate to amend it in a way that allows the speaker to ask for more time, because sometimes you do need more time. So if, and we could vote on it, we could have, Mr. President, you could, you could be that determining factor, we could have a vote of the body. But there should be an amendment that allows the speaker to request more time, and if the body agrees that they'd like to hear more, we can do that. And if we don't, we can move on. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the floor.
Before I go to Counselor Walsh, I just wanted to make one clarifying comment, which is that because it's worded as "hold the floor for longer than 10 consecutive minutes", it would already exclude the back-and-forth questioning, because the floor is then given to the presenter or department head to answer the question. So as long as no one asks a question that takes longer than 10 minutes to ask, they would not be holding the floor for longer than 10 minutes, even if they are engaged in an extended questioning session. That said, Counsel Walsh?
Yeah, I guess, I think that I agree with the points that, the amendment recommendations that Counselor Cruz has just made. I think that that makes sense. I'm curious, and I guess maybe I'd like a point of clarification. If we're, if we're talking about 10 consecutive minutes and whether it's a conversation between a department head and a Counselor, are we keeping track for, during those times that the Counselor is asking questions? Or is that question and answer period not counted?
Not counted. It's consecutive minutes.
Okay.
So if it's broken up by giving the floor to someone else, then it's not consecutive.
All right. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Sorry, Counsel Fleming, yes.
So what I'm hearing, and I heard this by a couple of Counselors, that this rule change is to make sure that the person waiting gets a chance to speak. So my thought is, everybody gets a chance to speak. And, you know, why can't they just wait their turn? Why do we have to cut one person's comment short to get this one in immediately? We're paid, we're here to conduct a meeting, we're here to speak, and we, nobody should be cut off mid-sentence because somebody else is waiting to speak.
Okay. Counselor Gina Tally?
So I just went through 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. I went through the last 13 meetings on FATV and looked at the amount of time each meeting spent, and only three meetings of those 13 went over an hour. 10 of the 13 last meetings we've had were under an hour. I think, I think we're trying to find a reason to justify this where none exists. It's not been a lot. If it is, show me the evidence. Okay? And I can tell you why it's not a lot, because I have missed a lot of meetings this past year. And I'm the one that this is targeted against, one of them. I'm going to say it. I haven't been here much, because I have other obligations that have come up in the last year. So I can tell you with definitiveness, this has not been an issue, because I haven't been here. And I'm the one who bloviates. And I am verbose and repetitive. So last 13 meetings, 10 of the 13 under an hour. Boy, we're really burning the midnight oil under an hour. All right? So if someone wants to speak, again, 10 minutes is a long time. There were three instances that I recall myself where I spoke a long time. The Me, Talman, and Costa issue, the road funding, road, the grant for the PMP, and The me, Talaman and Costa issue, the road funding, road, the grant for the PMP, and that was only seven minutes, because I put it on my Facebook page, it was seven minutes long, it wasn't 10. All right? But like Counsel Fleming said, so if I have to sit here and wait for someone to speak for 11 minutes, I'm going to start losing it? That's just the name of the game. I mean, if these meetings were going four hours at a clip, then I would say, okay, let's look at the meetings and see why. Is everyone speaking for 30 minutes and making maiden speeches? No, it's not an issue. What's going on is, there were a couple of instances where someone here ticked others off, and they said, you know what, let's put this forward, to shut them down. Because again, 18 years I've been doing this, this has never been a problem other than the last five or six. Okay? And there's a reason for that, because the Council's different now. This is personal preferences, this is not because of anything rooted in evidence. So, and we just got done saying how the President has a lot on his plate? This is going to add to that. Now he's going to worry about who's been speaking for 10 minutes or more? I mean, we're just trying to find reasons to do these things. They don't exist. Now, I just spoke for 2 minutes and 10 seconds. Is anyone here sweating in their seats, waiting to speak? I'm trying to be funny about it, because it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just say two things, and then leave it to the Council. One is just that any of, any of the rules to do with maintaining order are always intended for the minority of circumstances. The majority of Council meetings always will run smooth and short because we have often no controversial items on the agenda. The need for any of the rules that we have regarding good order in Council, including the ones that we all kind of agree with, it's always for those few controversial meetings each year. The second thing is, at least from my perspective, rules like this are not intended to target anyone, but rather to make sure that I'm being fair. In other words, instead of me having to make a judgment call and say, Counselor so-and-so has really been filibustering and is now, you know, getting too repetitious, or saying too many things that are tangential to the issue, instead, I can just say, all right, you had your 10 minutes. It's more objective. That being said, like has been said already, you know, I've, I've been doing this job a number of years now, I'll keep doing it with or without this rule. So Counsel Fleming?
Just to comment on what you just said, if that is happening, someone can just call a point of order, and we can end it right there without having to put a rule in regarding 10-minute limit.
Which happens. So sometimes, yes. If there's a rule that's being specifically violated, yes. Counselor Schultz?
I was just going to mention that Counselor Cruz is drafting an amendment to that rule as we speak, so maybe we could wait for him to put that forward.
Sure. Thank you, Counsel Schultz. I'll just, I'll make a motion to amend Proposal Two, to no member shall hold the floor for longer than 10 consecutive minutes while other, other members are waiting to speak during their second time speaking, and also add upon the member exceeding 10 minutes, that member may request an additional 10 minutes to be determined by roll-call vote of the Council.
That's an amendment proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second on the amendment. Go ahead, Counsel Fleming.
You're cutting somebody, we should not have to have a vote if that person can continue speaking to what they were speaking to. If you're cutting them short so somebody else can speak, and they still have a lot of things to say, why do we have to take a vote? Why can't we automatically go back to what they were saying? So this person can speak.
Counselor, that's, that's not the substance of the amendment. The substance of the amendment would be to take a vote to not cut them off, and allow them to continue without going to the next person first.
Okay. It didn't sound that way.
In other words, it would be, you know, I say, your 10 minutes have expired, we need to move on. You say, I'd like to ask the Council for more time. And then the Council says yes or no, and then I'd say, okay, the Council has granted you more time, you may continue. I'm not saying you should like it, I'm just saying, that's, that's the substance of the amendment, as I understand it. Is that correct, Counselor Cruz?
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. President. That is correct. Just trying to find common ground here, is we can have a courtesy for one another, but also give people the appropriate time to speak. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. I have a motion and second on the amendment. I'm not going to do this by roll-call unless someone requests it. Well, no, I have to, I'm sorry. We have Counselor Boishman on remote. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Van Hazinga?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Zarela?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
He's on.
I think that was a no, but you're muted, Counselor. I see you saying no.
Counselor Cregan?
No.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
No.
Counsel Fleming?
No.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Schultz? Again, the nos have it.
All right.
Make a motion to approve Proposal Two.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Zarela?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
That's a no.
Counselor Cregan?
No.
Counselor Cruz?
No.
Counselor Dean Tally?
No.
Counsel Fleming?
No.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Again, six, three nos have it.
All right, no problem. This last proposal, I take it will be a lot less controversial, although it does require an amendment because the previous one failed. We have two rules in our current set of rules that are both numbered 3.2. We simply need to renumber one of them as it's, it says 3.2B, but it should, now it should be 3.2A.
Make a motion and second, Proposal Three, to change Rule 3.2B to Rule 3.2A.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing none, it is before us as amended. Again, this simply takes the second of two rules that are both labeled as 3.2, and relabels it as 3.2A.
Motion to approve, Proposal Number Three.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any objection? Oh, I'm sorry, we do need to take this by roll-call vote still. Sorry, sorry. So we need to go back and take the amendment by roll-call vote. This is Counselor Cruz's amendment. Do I still have the motion and second?
Still, yes, I'll move.
All right. Madam Clerk, this is for the amendment.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarela?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Counselor Boishman appears to be frozen.
Okay. Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
So that passes, oh, because that would be...
Motion to approve, Proposal Three as amended.
Not going to count Counselor Boishman. So that passes nine members.
All right, and I have a motion, do I have, I have a motion and second, to approve the proposal as amended. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarela?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
Yes.
Counsel Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
And that again passes nine.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome back, Counselor Boishman, although you appear frozen again. Our final item on the agenda for today is the approval of the regular, regular schedule[1746.88]